Brian here?
Yeah, he's right over here.
Oh, okay. You ready? All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bowson.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
Here.
All right, just really quickly, Mr. Simon did let us know that he wouldn't be attending this meeting. He had some other things to be here, so he does send his regards. So could you all join me in a moment of silence? All right, next will be led by the Pledge of Allegiance by Ward One Council Member, Mr. John Childs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended. I would like to move our ordinance to after the public hearing and before resolutions, as well as the approval of the minutes of the February 3, 2025, regular council session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. And the first item of public comments, I would like to do, call Brian Bowman up front, please. Right, I would want to say a couple of things about this gentleman right here. As some of you know, working in our treatment facility is something that you don't often think about. You know, when you flush the toilets, too, you don't necessarily wonder what happens when you flush. You just know it leaves, right? If you, if you work in a restaurant and, you know, there's grease and stuff that goes where it's supposed to go, you don't necessarily wonder where it goes, but you know that it's taken care of. If you work at Tyson's and there's waste and all these other companies, you don't necessarily wonder where all those things actually go to. But they go to our treatment plant, which is one of the most sophisticated treatment plants in the entire, entire state of Iowa. In addition to that, several years ago, the city was unfortunately under a consent decree. And that consent decree required that we start taking care of problems and age-old things that we kind of didn't move as fast as we needed to years ago. And through all of those things, through, what, 30-plus years, through all of those things, there has been a sounding board throughout all the challenges, moving us into a, a much better future and a much better place with our treatment plan. And that person has been Mr. Brian Bowman. I don't know if I've seen another person as, as passionate about as Brian. And, and just another highlight, when we talk, we spoke years ago when Randy came on board, you know, the goal was, how can we take a look at those that are currently working in our plant to make sure that they have even better qualifications, they have higher grades than they, than they needed. And he and Randy put together a plan to make sure that on every level within our treatment plant, that we have the highest standard of grades and educations and certification. And so I never thought as mayor that there could be something as sexy as how we actually deal with the waste of other people, to make sure that we have a safe community, that we have an environmentally friendly community. And it's just been incredible to watch. And this certificate of appreciation, and I'll let Randy talk in a second, i- is very special because when you have outstanding leadership, you really embrace those folks that are making a difference every day. And that's what Brian has done for. So I'll turn it over to Randy before we actually do the honor of the appreciation.
Yeah, I just kind of want to start off, you know, Brian's been with the city just a little over 36 years. So incredible milestone as far as what he's done, the hard work, dedication, everything that you brought to the department, especially, you know, building the team environment for which we have. But just to kind of give a little bit of history as far as how Brian got to where he is today. You know, he started in, in February of 1999, or 89, part-time as laboratory technician, for which in 89, he became full-time. Since that time, you know, he got his grade one and grade two wastewater license, for which in, in 1993, he actually got to the point where he got clear up to his grade three, which is a huge feat to be able to do that. Once he was able to do that, he was actually promoted to lab tech two, and then along with getting the assistance for the lab service pre-treatment coordinator. With, with those accolades, being able to move up as quick as which Brian did, he actually was awarded in 2001, the Iowa Water Pollution Control Association Laboratory Analysis for Excellence Award, which was done through the state, which is a high honor, you know, for not only Brian, but for the city for having a employee get that promotion. After that, he was then promoted to lab service pre-treatment foreman, for which he was kind of doing within the, the department there. There was some restructuring within the department, which then he also took on the role as the foreman role, operations foreman as well, within the city. And as the mayor kind of said, you know, when you kind of get into some of the consent decree, there was some additional reorganization. But Brian was one that kind of took on some additional responsibilities. And with that, in 2018, he was promoted to the treat, pre-treatment supervisor for out at the wastewater plant. Since that time, he also got his grade four. That's the highest grade for which you can get in wastewater, is which is part of the requirement, what we need for the plant. And then since that time, he also, in 2019, was awarded the Region One Wastewater Operator of the Year. That's for our area, so that's a, the highest award for which you can get in wastewater. So that's, that's a huge feat. So with all that, it's going to be tough, tough shoes to fill, but you have done an excellent job.
So certificate of appreciation, this is the biggest, biggest frame and award. Certificate of Appreciation awarded to Brian Bowman by the City of Waterloo, Iowa, on this, not 28th day, 8th day of February, 2025, an appreciation of your service, dedication, loyalty in serving the citizens of Waterloo. And that is your retirement date, correct? And so he will be leaving. And so do you have any comments for, sir?
I do, I do, thank you.
Did Wendy write them?
I've actually got some cheat notes here. First, first off, I'd like to thank the community of Waterloo. They've given me a great opportunity, a career opportunity I didn't even realize existed. I was working at a hospital and I got notification that there was a part-time job available at the wastewater treatment plant. I'm like, I can do lab work. I should do that. Got on part-time and my eyes opened and, and, and there was a career in front of me and things to see. So thank you to the citizens of Waterloo to, you know, giving me that opportunity. You know, one of the primary objectives in my, in my role was serving the citizens of Waterloo. And next, I'd like to thank Public Works Director Randy Bennett. He did a, he's come on now, it's been five years, Randy? Is that correct? Six years? Under his leadership and, you know, our brainstorming, we've made incredible moves out at the wastewater treatment plant and in Public Works. So big gratitude to Randy and his leadership. Then I got to thank the staff out at Waste Management Services. These are the people that I grew up with in my career. They're my friends, they're my loved ones. And eventually I became a supervisor and they supported me all the way through it. These are the people that were doing the down and dirty task every day, and they put extraordinary trust in me. And I thank them and I appreciate them, and I've got big confidence in them moving forward. I really do. Other city, other city departments, I couldn't have done it without, Quentin says teamwork makes, or, one more time? Yeah, okay. And, and, and it's a fact, right? I rely on not only Public Works, you know, and their expertise, but engineering over there, Jamie's Department, Knowles, work with Knowles Department, the clerks in the, in the city clerks, legal department with Marty, thank, thank them as well because, you know, they made my career successful. I'd like to thank the current council, council, I've put things on the agenda. And they, you know, they'd have questions and they'd ask them appropriately and wisely, and I appreciate you guys having trust in me. I got to come to my family. My family puts up with me coming home, specifically Wendy. And I'm talking about things that I do, and she gives me support, and my kids give me support. I see, I see grandkids in the audience tonight, and their smiles and thumbs up mean everything to me. Finally, I'd like to thank Mayor Quentin Hart. Quentin, you've been mayor since 2016, isn't that correct? During that time, I've really developed a relationship with Quentin, and I'm just amazed, over the years, how much detail he knows about what we do. In fact, he tells me oftentimes how much he knows about what we do, over and over. In fact, someone, one of his last statements to me is like, the DNR should just be giving me a grade one operator certificate. I know so much. So with that in mind, and if you could hold this, in your patient with Randy Bennett and myself, one of my last directives here is this honorary wastewater grade one operation certificate, which certifies that Quentin Hart possesses the necessary knowledge of wastewater treatment and sewer collection systems to ensure continuation and protection of the citizens of Waterloo, Iowa's public health, and ensures environmental protection. It has got the Mother Nature Approved seal on here, folks. This is the real deal, not by the DNR, but by me and Randy Bennett. It is honorary only, but he does possess that knowledge. Congratulations, Quentin Hart.
Someone think I know what I'm talking about. So without further ado, thank you so much. Whatever your future endeavors are, you have certainly earned it. And could we give him a round of applause?
That was very good.
That made me cry laughing.
Notice he said the continuation, meaning keep that funding coming and keep, that is hilarious. All right, it is now time for oral presentations, your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda related items. One thing that I wanted to say, there has been a tremendous amount of conversation about parking. A couple of weeks ago, I think there was an option two that was mentioned. Just for the record, and I know sometimes when you read things, it made it seem as that that was something that actually happened. It has not happened. There has not been a vote taken. I have had the chance to talk to all the city council members individually. I've had an opportunity to talk to a couple of the downtown business owners and also with Ms. Jessica Rucker from Main Street. At our next council meeting, there will be a different option. That option will compose of one free hour of parking, which is in between the middle of 90 minutes and, and no minutes. There will be 50 cent increase for the parking rate after that first hour of a dollar, which actually almost equates out to what it was anyway, because it was 50 cents for the majority of parking stalls per, per hour anyway. So there will be an option for that increase to add 50 cents for that hour. There will be also a parking ramp option of an hour free within the parking ramp as well. There will also be an option to take a look at maybe, I know there's been some conversation about towing, but if there was a boot option, well, not a boot, but a, some type of mechanism option that's less than the tow truck, but after a certain time, then the car will be towed if it's not done within the timeframe. So that's an option that I've had conversations with some of you. That's an option that I've had with individual members of the Waterloo City Council, and that is to move to an hour of free parking. And especially, you have to register through the kiosk, but free parking, not that. The, the penalties will be as we discussed. So that is going to come to you next council meeting. So hopefully, there is some level of support in the public for it. But for the first time in history, we're moving to a free parking for that first hour. We've also had conversations about the parking ramp. We know there's been some concerns, some council members and staff have met to discuss where we're at with the improvements to the parking ramp, and those will continue to move forward. And then last but not least, we've heard your conversations with regards to some level of security or support within the parking ramps after hours. That's still to be discussed and still continue to find a particular funding source. And last but not least, in all full transparency, our hope is to have an RFP at some point within the next couple of weeks to take a look at overall parking services. And that's not saying that we won't have our current, but having some type of RFP to start, look at parking services for downtown Waterloo. And so majority of those things will be brought to you. I think, I want to thank the city council as well for their input and thank all of you for letting your voices be heard. I'm probably on email number 40. I haven't made it to the other 20 or so, but the city council has heard, and we think we have a really decent compromise that will be brought to you next week. And thank you, Jessica, for your patience. We know that, you know, it's a, a tight line in between, walking in between both of those. So we thank you for your sternness as well. But, sir.
Okay. Aaron Stacy Roberts, 411 Alma Street, Waterloo, Iowa. Modern-day slave. I want to shoot something at you that's involving the criminal activity that I've been concerned about, that has been grossly overlooked and if not even egged on. It's called Operation Greylord. Have you ever heard of it? Okay, that's something that you should really look at. Operation Greylord. And then also Silver Shovel. Ever heard of Silver Shovel? Ford Heights, Illinois. That's where six police, as well as the chief, got hit for corruption and racketeering, kind of like what's going on here. The reason I'm going there is because I have to look to compare cases to what I'm going through. That's why I bought up last week, Mayor, the FECR 256356, which Brian Williams, the prosecuting attorney, brought against Tyler Young, a criminal mischief, second-degree hate crime. And what he did was not to you, but to Travis Hall, when he said, "Nigga, go back to Africa with the rest of the gorillas." That was a hate crime for him. And that's all that I could find racial with anything that happened to you other than being called niggas. In my case, I met with Buck Clark, Dan Treckel, and a detective to express my concerns about the case 9914612, where my daughter was raped and then sent a message to me from a corporation here in Waterloo. John Deere and Company was a part of it because that's the money I was looking for. When I went to them, a week later, after I left the mayor's office downstairs, Kellyanne LaCarre, along with Dan Treckel and a lady, Sharice Atkins, who I'd never met before in my life, had me put under a mental committal, saying I was homicidal, who's that on going to shoot up City Hall? And I still haven't owned the gun. I got the MHO 13288 case. This guy is talking about, "Nigga, go back to Africa with the rest of the gorillas," and he got arrested. Whereas if I did something wrong, I should have been arrested. But what it was, was very much a violation of my constitutional rights, wrongdoing, malicious, and corrupt what Kellyanne LaCarre did, with a lot of forethought and specific intent. And what that was, was to cripple me, pretty much. I'm going to cut it right there because I want to come back on that same note with how she also affected me with the farmland that I have a court date on July 1 of 2025, and this criminal and fraud activity in that, put on by a judge that can be held accountable by violating the 14th Amendment of federal law.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda related items?
Dennis Jewell, 3905 Sager Avenue. I'm here in regard to a coming up action to sell some of the Marion Park land to the school for a dollar. In 1963, Aaron Miller donated 7.2 acres of land to the park board to be used by the park board as a park in memory of his wife. At the same time, the city bought 10 acres of adjoining land for $27,000 to give us 17.2 acres.
Hey, Mr. Jewell, since this is on the agenda, we, we have just the setting the date of hearing because it is on the, to
To do that, March 3, I think it is.
Yeah, to move to the consent agenda. I would probably say it's okay to reach out directly to the city council member, but this is, this is already on here to set a date of hearing to begin the discussion on that. I don't want to cut you off. You can give me a call as well, but this is on the agenda to set a date of hearing, not to vote on it, but just to set a date of hearing for the future. And I believe that Mr. Childs, if I'm not mistaken, is going to make some, we'll, we'll wait to that item to make some comments on behalf of the, the neighbors. And then at that point, feel free, if you haven't already talked to all of the council members, continue to do so. But it's just setting the date of hearing, but it is on the agenda. I hate to cut you off, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Rucker. I'm with Main Street Waterloo. And I just wanted to thank you guys for removing option two from, for the parking decision off the agenda and discussing it more. Downtown Waterloo has been in a period of growth and momentum, and businesses are investing. We've had several new businesses opening, with two opening within, before the end of second quarter. Also, we have developers bringing in new housing and doing some major projects in downtown. I just received on Friday afternoon a report from the state of Iowa with a Placer AI report that shows Waterloo was the third most visited downtown district in the state of Iowa in 2024, which is pretty amazing. Parking should support this growth and not restrict it. So again, I just want to thank you for removing that agenda item and listening to the constituents, listening to the businesses. As you guys evaluate the changes and the options Mayor Hart mentioned, I just ask you to think about the impact that your decision has on the businesses. They depend on convenient, accessible parking for their customers. And if parking becomes more difficult or confusing, customers will go elsewhere. Also, downtown's economic growth. We've worked to bring new investment into downtown and through new housing and development projects, businesses, business expansion and community events. So please make sure that these changes that you end up deciding on and going on the agenda at the next meeting don't undermine those efforts by addressing or by adding unnecessary barriers, which it sounds like you guys are moving in a direction that we're going to be happy with. And then I just want to say, downtown is a vital economic hub for the city of Waterloo. And so let's all work together to make decisions that move us forward, not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next week, that next, the next meeting, it'll be, no, it's March, March 3. So please don't expect to see anything with number two on it. We may not even, it made it, it won't even be number two on the agenda. So council has spoken and I've heard them, I've heard all of you, and we'll come back with something, hopefully, where we can change the narrative and support powering up downtown. Yes, sir? You have comments?
Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. At the budget meeting, they just, they had something on the budget about the magazine that was going to be printed and they were, are going to approve. They have already printed the magazine. So the fact that it says it's supposed to be done pre-authorization tells me that pre-authorization was not done with this printing. Also, it says that it will be a once-a-year newsletter in the budget meeting. This thing says that it is a quarterly. So the $6,000 that will be spent out of the budget, $6,900 and something out of the budget for this magazine, I would like to know if that's quarterly, yearly, and why was it not done before the printing and mailing of the magazine?
All right, thank you, Mr. Dilavu. So when it says quarterly, there'll be one print copy, and then the rest of the time, there'll be an online publication. So there won't be the same charges because we're not mailing it to everyone. It'll just be one printed copy per year. The rest is online.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And I just want to say a little bit about the parking. It has affected my business. And it doesn't matter what you put in place. If it's not enforced, it ain't going to work. Because people park all kinds of way on that street. They even park sideways. And I think we need to have handicap park on that front street. I know we have it on the side, but people like to come down the street. And their handicap and handicap deserves the right to be able to have a park on that main street there. And since my, a lot of my customers can't get to the shop, I have to go out, sometimes we have to go out and service our customers because there's no parks. And if there can be something in place where the workers can park in that ramp, that would help a lot. Because it takes up all the parks, and then I'm, people don't want to come down and shop because there's no parks. So I wish you guys would consider handicap park on that street. And that's all I got to say. And you guys are doing a great job. I'm going to tell you, every time I come up here, I think you're doing a great job.
And please state your name and address for the record.
Oh.
I know it, but I need for you to
It's Renee Carson, 1108 Vine Street.
All right, thank you. And I think part of the, part of the reasoning maybe for the, um, the parking is that there is no curb accessibility in the middle of the lanes. And so if a person was in a wheelchair, they would literally have to go over. But at the ends of the corner, ends of the blocks due to ADA accessibility, there are some slopes for people to be able to access the sidewalk from there. And so we may not be able to do anything about that. But with regards to how the ends of our blocks look, we definitely need to take care of, take care of that. So thank you for your comments. And part of the reason for putting out the RFP is to kind of take a look and see how we do enforcement downtown as well. So hopefully this will alleviate any other concerns.
Hi, Council, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Nick Hedrick, I'm the Vice President of Main Street Waterloo, and I'm not here to talk about parking. As everybody knows, Main Street Waterloo is a nonprofit organization where a lot of our funding comes from our events, so our beer sales and the admission. So just by attending the events, you're making an impact on downtown Waterloo. Main Street Waterloo champions downtown as the heart of our community by fostering economic vitality, historic preservation, and a thriving small business ecosystem. Downtown Waterloo is a hub of entrepreneurial energy with almost forty percent of our businesses being minority owned, twenty-three percent of our businesses being women owned, and a growing number of new storefronts with two new openings late spring or early summer. To support these great businesses that we have downtown, we have a brand new event happening on Saturday, the twenty-second. It's called Support Local. Participants will be doing a walking tour of delicious soups from different restaurants while exploring your downtown Waterloo. And not just a food event, this is about economic impact, encouraging diners to discover new favorite spots and come back for more. A great way to warm up with good food while showing love to your, all our small businesses. Again, Saturday, February twenty-second, twelve to three. You can purchase a limited edition commemorative soup bowl at downtown retailers and receive a discount code for your ticket purchase. Tickets are fifteen dollars and you will get eight soup, soup samples and a chance to win surprises. Also, on February, or Tuesday, excuse me, Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, is our Support Local Cash Mob. Our Cash Mobs continue to be a fun and impactful way to rally around local businesses. This month, we'll be highlighting the Girl Scouts. Who doesn't love Girl Scout cookies? These Cash Mobs provide an immediate boost in sales while fostering long-term customer relationship, relationships. They're also an opportunity to showcase unique businesses that make downtown Waterloo very special. Join us at the Main Street office for the Girl Scout Cash Mob on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, from five to seven. Again, all of this can be found on our website, our, my, or, excuse me, MainStreetWaterloo.org. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone that would like to address the council on non-agenda related items? Going a second time?
Counsel.
Counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Just thank you to those that showed up to Mr. Bozen and I's ward meeting last month. Just a reminder, we have that ward meeting every month, the final Saturday of that month at the Ridgeway Sidecar, the Ridgeway Sidecar. So we had a new citizen show up this past meeting. Again, it's not necessary for you to come for the whole meeting. If you just have a simple question and you just want to ask the question and leave, it's just a chance for have that face to face, which I'm a big believer in face to face representation. So please come talk with us if you have any questions. If you want to chat and stay the whole time, please feel free to. If you want to come for five minutes, ask your questions and head out, please feel free to as well. I hope to see you there, final Saturday of every month at Ridgeway Sidecar.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to share that Ward Four Town Hall will take place this Thursday at six o'clock at the Boys and Girls Club's Teen Center on East Fourth Street. So I'm looking forward to seeing not just Ward Four, but anyone who's interested in what's going on in the community and some updated information regarding all-in grocers.
All right, thank you. Sir.
I just had a quick question for, for Mr. Bennett. Is he still here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. About, about the downtown snow removal, can you give us an update? I know you guys have been busy and they've done an excellent job. But I've noticed there are a lot of areas in downtown and including the four parking spaces we've lost in City Hall, just, just in the, in the plowing. Do you know when we'll be finishing up the downtown?
Yep, Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. So yeah, staff is, uh, they're gonna be starting to haul the piles tonight, actually. So our third shift will, will start on them. But yeah, they've been kind of tidying, tidying things up. And then starting tomorrow, we're gonna be pulling some of the areas off through the day as well, too.
And, and I know some of them are gonna be difficult because like I parked outside on Fifth Street and there's about three feet of ice, hard packed because, you know, it's, it's pretty wet snow on Saturday morning. And now it's with the plowing. But I just, as long as we had a bunch of downtown merchants in here, I thought we'd at least give them a heads up on, on when we can get more parking spaces down the, downtown for them.
Yeah, like I said, our third shift, it'll start on our third shift tonight. But they'll, they'll kind of do some stuff here at City Hall first, but then they're gonna start going down forth and then we'll start working on all the side streets after that.
Thank you.
And we've already probably put out information to remove your cars, right? People know that?
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do a, a snow emergency though. So, um, you know, the, the after hours, most of the time that's freed up. It's just during the day. But yeah, we didn't do a snow emergency to have people move their cars. But we'll, we'll get to the piles that we can and the ones that, uh, the vehicles are parked too close and we'll do that in the after hours.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of one A-one bills payment for February tenth, twenty twenty-five. That amount is three million, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. And for February seventeenth, four million, five hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred two dollars and nine cents.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to remove item four from the consent agenda.
Right, you'd like to discuss that. So all the items, uh, other than the one that Mr. Childs mentioned, Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Childs.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution to set the date of public hearing as March third, twenty twenty-five, for the sale of convenience, a selling convenience of city-owned property, a portion of Marion's Park located east of three eight four three Sager Avenue to Waterloo School in the amount of one dollar, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Mr. Childs.
Thank you. I know I have some citizens here today speaking that wanted to speak or wanted to know more about the Marion's Park and the school's purchase of that land. Today, we are setting the public hearing date. So the objective today is just to get it on the agenda next, for next month on March third, so that way we can talk about it in public as a whole council. Just so that you are aware, I am working with the school board and superintendent. I have a meeting with them this Friday to go over your concerns. And I have, I have what you wrote here, which is very useful. If you have any other documentation you'd like to pass forward so that I can bring it with me to this meeting on Friday, please pull, uh, push that forward and our chief can pass that to me. This is just a step in the process. Things that we really want to make sure we see with Marion's Park is keeping that green space for kids to play on and then figuring out the situation with this road that wants to go through. So I, I am having those conversations. My goal is to meet with you guys and the superintendent prior to March third. So let's keep in contact. I know we've already been talking, I've talked a lot with Lori already. And I continue, uh, look forward to continue working with you to make sure that this is fair for the citizens. Thank you.
And to add to that, uh, you attended the school board meeting and spoke directly with the school board members about the concerns of the residents as well. You've also had conversations with staff in regards to as well, and that won't stop. So, uh, thank you for advocating and whoever else on council that has been doing it as well. And, uh, we're optimistic that those meetings will go well. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
No problem. Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, citizens.
All right, so this is just setting the date of hearing. This is not saying yes or no to this project. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Somebody? All right, um, really quickly, uh, I would like to, we have, uh, two, uh, board appointments for new commissioners. Leona Middleton and Angela Beck, are either one of you here? Please stand up. You are Angela Beck. Is Leona here? You are a new, uh, board member to the Cultural, Cultural and Arts Commission. So we want to thank you so much for partnering, working together, and trying to ensure the best, uh, that we can possibly have for our Center for Arts and surrounding program. So thank you for stepping up to, to, to make us great. Thank you. All right, we also have a new, uh, appointment for the mechanic in Leisure Services. Mr. Colin Whittle, are you here? All right, we want to say thank you so much for joining the City of Waterloo team. We have mighty expectations for your service here. And I know you have some expectations in this working relationship. So we want to thank you so much for joining the team. And we wish nothing but great success for you while you're here. So thank you. All right, um.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Can I do, uh, number one, public hearing?
No, you have to do one before that, don't you?
I was gonna.
Oh, you're gonna wait.
I was gonna do it after the public hearing, sorry.
All right, so.
Sorry.
Let's let folks, um, exit, clear out that once, too. Wonder if everybody wants to hang out? Uh-oh, I said, great. You calm down. All right.
All right, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for a request by Levi Architecture on behalf of Troy Sandwiches for a site plan amendment in the S-one Shopping Center District located at thirty-one forty-six Kimball Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment about, uh, this, um, uh, amendment to the S-one Shopping District?
You've got questions, I'd love to answer them.
We have the man himself here, Troy. But, um, anyone else has comments? Are there any comments on file?
There's no comments on file.
No comments on file.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to close the public hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amendment to ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended. City of Waterloo zoning ordinance as by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a request by Levi Architecture on behalf of Troy, Troy Sandwiches for a site plan amendment to allow for a quick service restaurant in an existing building in an S-one Shopping Center District located at thirty-one forty-six Kimball Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I, I had some questions.
Yes, sir.
If, if possible. And, uh, because I'm, I'm a council liaison with planning and zoning, then when it came before planning and zoning, you only have forty-four parking spaces.
Correct.
And, and my only question is, is that when I was reading the Courier article, that, that, uh, you were going to be having like fifteen people hired for the deli. And when you move it, when you decide to do the restaurant, up to fifty people for that. And then your advanced sign business and then your live music venue. Are you gonna have enough parking for all of this?
So I've worked with the neighbors. We've got neighbors directly behind us that have about fifty parking spots. They are willing to give us a letter of authorization so that we can utilize their space after hours. They're only open Monday through Friday till five P.M. The dinner restaurant would be the only thing that really would require additional parking and it wouldn't open till five P.M. We have a lot of, the sandwich shop and the restaurant are gonna have opposite hours. So those two businesses won't be open at the same time. The sign business that's coming, um, I might have an employee or two on, but we will park inside of our building for them. I could see that parking could potentially be an issue, but most of this stuff isn't going to overlap.
Excellent, and, and I, I wish you the best. It was just, when the funeral home was there, that it always overflowed when they, when they had a big service there that we were in, in, in other businesses' parking lots during that time. But, but now that I see that you've got permission and are gonna have a letter. And then, of course, if any other changes, as they said, you'll have to come back.
Absolutely, understood.
And hopefully you'll, that you'll have that letter so it's not, parking's not gonna be an issue because it's always brought up at those meetings.
Yeah, the, the guy that attended the planning and zoning meeting with me, his name is Trent. He is the neighbor and he came in support and was willing to speak on behalf of himself at that meeting, should the question have arisen, so.
Thank you, I wish you all the success.
Thank you, I'm super excited, grateful to be here.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for? All right. Motion, I mean, um, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Congratulations. All right, uh, number two. You had an opening date?
We were looking for March seventeenth, assuming we can get through the rest of the permit process now.
Okay.
Your guys' team has been fantastic. Everybody's been real receptive, so we're very grateful.
All right, thank you.
We'll be there for sandwiches.
We would love to serve.
Bacon, egg, and cheese.
Yeah, I like turkey, turkey cheese.
We're all hungry now. Mr. Childs.
Thank you. I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the Terminal Security Upgrades Project Contract Number five eight one nine.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on security upgrades?
David Dar, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Is this being paid for by the FFA?
Stephen.
Stephen Kierger, Director of Aviation. This is actually being funded partially by an ARPA grant and then also by state grants as well.
And can you, the purpose of these upgrades?
The purpose of the upgrades is so we meet category three security requirements to allow the larger aircraft coming in in June.
And the larger aircraft is coming in June?
Coming in June.
Which I'm taking, so it's better.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. All right, um, any other comments? Madam Clerk? No. Sir?
I move to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
Let's take a voice vote first.
So we gotta close the hearing and he just closed the hearing.
That's right, I'm sorry.
And receives, so my problem. And we had a second, who's second?
Yeah, I'm talking to a grade one.
Right, I'm a grade one now. There's so many meanings behind that. Madam Clerk, uh, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?[1673.34] The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specification bid documented in the form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
No questions, but this is something that has needed to have been happening for a long time. And I want to... I have so much respect for you for coming into this city and moving like a racehorse and doing so much to our airport, which is necessary for the economy of the Cedar Valley. And there are so many things that we can do to really make sure that this airport brings jobs to this city. So, thank you for getting this done, and I look forward to taking that flight on June 10th, because I will be going on this flight.
June 5th.
No, I'm going on June 10th.
Oh, you're going on June 10th.
I'm using it of my... I'm paying money to go on that flight on June 10th. So, I look forward to being on that plane that day.
All right, thank you, sir. Giddy up, that should be our theme for this year. All right, I don't even know. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Giddy up's going in the minutes. Mr. Bozen.
Giddy up, yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Sir.
I move to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk.
All right, our engineer's estimate is $290,000 for the Terminal Security Upgrades Access Control System. Our bidder was KNW Electric of Cedar Falls, Iowa. Bid security was not required for this, and their bid amount was $220,456. Our second type of bid was Terminal Security Upgrades, secured door upgrades. The engineer's estimate was $46,000. Peters Construction Corporation of Waterloo, Iowa, was the sole bidder. Bid security was not required. Their bid amount was $73,740. The bid for the surveillance camera upgrades, the estimate for that was $105,000. We had one bid from KNW Electric of Cedar Falls, no bid security required, and their bid amount was $126,121. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Could I have a clarification?
Seventy-three thousand?
Is it seventy-three, four hundred?
Seventy-three, is it 147?
Uh, I've got... Which one are we looking at? The first one?
Peters Construction.
Or Peters? I've got $73,740 written in the minutes. In the... Let me check the tab real quick. To keep things moving, why don't we approve it as it's written there? And then I'll make a note in the minutes, and I can let counsel know for sure what the correct dollar amount is, unless, Steven, do you know offhand? Okay. Okay. Let's go ahead and approve it as written on the agenda, and I will email counsel with the... To verify the correct amount.
Thank you. Am I able to read all three at one time?
Yep, go ahead.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving bid to KNW Electric of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of $220,456, approving the contract, bond, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the Terminal Security Upgrades Project, i.csvi, contract number 5819, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute documents. A resolution approving award of bid to Peters Construction Corporation of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $73,400, approving the contract, bond, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the secured door upgrades portion of the Terminal Security Upgrades Project, i.csvi, contract number 5819, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute that document, and a resolution approving the award of bid to KNW Electric of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of $126,121, approving contract, bond, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the surveillance camera upgrades portion of the Terminal Security Upgrades Project, i.csvi, contract number 5819, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. We have an update.
Just a note, I've got... Was able to pull up the bid from Peters Construction. The total dollar amount was $73,740. The bid tab was correct, but the dollar amount listed in the resolution is not correct.
So duly noted. To the record.
Okay, um, do I need to say that?
No, that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, counsel questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
I can't ask a question, can I? I'll wait.
Okay.
All right. All right, number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
I make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for fiscal year 2024, Hawthorne Avenue, Storm Sewer Lift Station Relief Well, contract number 1066.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that has questions about Storm Sewer Lift Station Relief Well? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming the approval of plan specification, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to the city engineer for review.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk.
All right, our engineer's estimate was $300,000. We had two bidders. The first was Northway Well and Pump Company of Marion, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $444,750. Our second and final bidder was Kohoi... The Kohoi Group, excuse me, of Sumner, Iowa. They provided 5% security, and their bid amount was $349,931.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number four?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nichols.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, proof publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property lots six and seven of block 16 of Downing Place to EIC Enterprises LLC in the amount of $1, including approval of a development agreement for relocation of two homes.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on our agenda?
Forest Delo, 1725 Huntington Road. Where would these houses be coming from? Obviously, they're being moved there.
Mr. Anderson, you want to give an update?
Like to see what they look like before they come to the neighborhood.
Joel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. It is 1633 and 1637 Lafayette Street.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Delo. All right, any other questions?
David Dyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. We're selling this for a dollar. How much money do we have since they are city-owned property do we already have in these two properties?
Mr. Anderson.
Joel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, both of the lots on Chalmers were 657A, so we have about $300 in them for acquisition, roughly. And then we did demo both houses on there. The demos probably ranged from $7,000 to $10,000 each with asbestos in demo.
So, will these lots generate dollars eventually?
Correct. With the houses being moved there, obviously, the houses are being moved for the food bank expansion. The houses right now are assessed at about $45,000 each on Lafayette. The houses in this general vicinity are ranging from about $85,000 to about $120,000. As part of the moving houses over there, they will have to put in new foundations to place them on. They will have to build new garages to go with the houses, so we expect the value of the houses to go up significantly.
So, will we have any money in... Providing them money to do these moves? Or is that all on the company that's moving them?
Mr. Anderson.
The company will have to pay for moving and all that. We will give them the $5,000 infill for each house that we normally give for infill housing, and then we are giving them $5,000 per each house for relocation efforts.
So, they get $20,000 from us for doing it?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion's made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property lots six and seven of block 16 of Downing Place to EIC Enterprises LLC in the amount of $1, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Aye. I saw the presentation on the additions at the Gaming Commission when they made their presentation, and I'm 100% behind this. Mr. Anderson said $5,000 infill housing and $5,000 movement expenses, but the development agreement calls for $10,000 for infill housing. I know it's the same amount of money. I just... I sent an email to Mr. Anderson a couple of weeks ago and saying that I wasn't in favor of the $10,000 infill housing verbiage. I would have much rather seen $5,000 and a $5,000 grant, because I've had meetings with Mr. Anderson where he's discussed wanting to increase infill housing for specific projects for $10,000 a unit, and I don't want to set a precedence. I'm not in favor of doing that, and I hate to set a precedence, and I just... I'm dead set against the wording, and I asked to have it changed two weeks ago, and it still says $10,000 infill housing. I know it was explained differently here, but it also says...
Relocation to the infill.
Right.
Okay.
But it's too late now, but I am gonna support it, but I do not want to set a precedence of starting to put $5,000, $10,000 for infill development, because I won't support that in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions? Comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nichols.
Sorry. I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with EIC Enterprises LLC and Northeast Iowa Food Bank, Inc. for relocation of two homes with a total of $20,000 infill housing grant, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. The motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now, we're going to take an ordinance, uh, right now.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance permitting the dog and cat licensing regulations.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Any questions? We had a work session about this.
David Dreyer, 3145 West 4th Street. I went deeper into the computer and realized that I guess I don't understand that you are turning down, which I tried to do today, because I forgot it, me licensing my dog before you've passed this ordinance. Normally, an ordinance would be passed, and then it takes effect. You've taken effect already. Is that fair to the public? And I understand from talking to other people that some of these elderly people have already tried to do that. Now, it's going to go online. A lot of these people don't have a computer. Yeah, you can come down to Police Department, go down and see. The curtain's shut. You gotta go knock on the window or whatever to get access to somebody to help you. But normally, an ordinance would take, would stay in effect until the new ordinance is passed. You're negating that already. Why? That doesn't seem like the right thing to do to the public, and myself included. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dreyer. Chief, um, who would that be to respond to the comments? And I know we discussed last time at the meeting some various efforts to get more people signed up, so I don't know if you want to recap some of that, and then...
Yeah, Rob Duncan, Chief of Police. So, what we did was, we're trying to streamline the process. Mr. Dreyer talked about making it more difficult for the elderly people actually will come to your house and have you sign up with our animal control. And I know there was a lot of discussion with the city clerk to get things going on a yearly renewal, so it's a 365-day renewal instead of January to January. That's why they were kind of turned away, and then we'll retouch, we'll touch base with them once this gets done.
All right. Thank you, sir. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I had a few questions, and I appreciate that that was not discussed at our work session. I appreciate Chief Duncan saying that, that the people that don't have the internet and don't have the ability to get online, that they, that they'll come out and do it for them. I do appreciate that. A couple of things in this ordinance, a written certificate from a licensed veterinarian shall be required to prove the dog or cat is incapable of breeding and has been vaccinated for rabies. Who do they turn that written certificate into? Because the majority of this is going to be online.
What we're asking them to do is to send it to DocuPet, so all that stuff can get documented, and then our animal control folks can look into the system a lot easier and be able to determine whatever they need to when it comes to if they're going out on a call with a pet.
But you've not had meetings with veterinarians yet?
No.
Because I've spoke to my veterinarian, and there was news to them that they were, at the end of the day, they said, "You can't believe how many dogs that we vaccinate for rabies every day."
Yeah.
And that's going to put an extra burden on the veterinarians that have to do this.
I think, uh, what their plan is to go to each vet and talk to them about it. It's basically just being able to get our animal control folks more information up to date, so if they go on a call and they don't know for sure if the dog has the rabies vax or not, they can look in the system and find it.
So, how do you determine how far you reach out to vets? Because some people take their vets outside of Waterloo because of the cost of a local, local veterinarians are so much higher.
It's a good question. We'll have to work through that.
Okay. All right. And then, and then on 5-1, it says, "Whenever a veterinarian inoculates an animal for rabies, the veterinarian shall complete a rabies vaccination report and forward it to the Police Department or the designated, which will be DocuPet." And so, now, let's say they vaccinate 50 dogs that day. Now, they're going to send that 50 dogs into DocuPet?
Yes.
And then, is that going to also create a database for animal control to say, "These dogs aren't licensed?" Because I've got 50 dogs here in Waterloo, and only three of them have dog licenses through DocuPet.
Yeah, that's not the idea behind it. I think the idea behind it is to be able to say, if they come across a dog, to know if they're vaccinated or not. They're not going to go out and look for people to sign up.
Well, that was a question someone approached me on.
Oh, sure.
You know, because, because they says, you know, "This is just a way for the, for animal control to figure out that you don't have a license."
Yeah, no, that's not the case.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take, uh...
I need to suspend the rules. Have it on the agenda incorrectly.
Oh, all right. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh...
Second.
Motion to consider and pass for a second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
The motion has blessed you. Going, uh, we got a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we come back, 1, 2, and 3, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt, following resolutions, first is a resolution establishing dates of fireworks for use for July 4th and July 5th, 2025. Uh, second is a resolution establishing pet licensing fees. And third is a resolution approving a software agreement with DocuPet in the amount of $3,995 in conjunction with pet licensing services, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Are there any questions on these three items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
On, uh, just a quick question for the, for the chief. Have they discussed enforcement as far as fireworks goes? I'm totally in favor of narrowing it down to July 4th and 5th, and I, and I want to thank you for bringing it up to, up to this council before the March 1st deadline, so that we can actually, don't have to adopt last year's dates.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Cedar Falls, too, so I'm thinking they're going to adopt the same dates, too. We haven't talked about enforcement yet. Sir, you want to...
Sure. Uh, what question do you have for him?
I just, I just, my question was, is, are we going to have enforcement? You know, we didn't write many, many citations last year, and we, I think we wrote one the year before.
Sure, sure.
And I'm looking for enforcement, because you're going to, as you know, uh, leading up to July 4th, it starts getting really busy on the 2nd and 3rd, and it's going, also going to be busy on that Sunday when everyone has to go back to work on Monday, on that weekend of July 6th. So, I'm just curious on, if we're going to put together a plan for some type of enforcement that we can actually crack down on people that are using them illegally, and also people using them in our city parks, because it is a, it is a problem when they're, when they're going to our parks. We had that issue at Crossroads a couple of years ago, where they just created one heck of a mess there, where they just had a big party in their parking lot and left all their debris.
I think we'll probably have to look at it from the standpoint of maybe some, authorizing some overtime. That time of year, we're going from call to call to call, and trying to catch somebody in the act of it is going to be really difficult. So, if the boss wants to authorize some overtime, we'll definitely do that.
Well, outside of the boss authorizing. My, my, my other question would be, is this something that we can utilize reserves for if we can get them to participate on those dates?
Sure, yep.
That would not entail overtime, then?
No, actually, they're really cheap.
Yeah.
But they're great.
Dollar to a year. Thank you.
All right, so we have, uh, three items.
Oh, I have two more things, sir.
You added the reserve, so, reserve officer, yes, sir.
And I, I'm going to move to, to, forward on 2 and 3, but I, in my heart, I don't sit, I, I just have a hard time increasing dog licenses that we've had historically for $5 a year to 15 and 25.
Okay.
So...
Doing all of it. All right, uh, Madam Clerk, roll call vote for 1, 2, and 3.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Did you, you voted in support of 2?
All three.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, could we do, uh, 4, 5, and 6, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to adopt a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Tyler Technologies in an amount not to exceed $3,510 in conjunction with the implementation and training of the New World Purchase Order Module, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. A resolution approving a levy improvement fund grant application to the state of Iowa in conjunction with the fiscal year 2024 Hawthorne Avenue Storm Sewer Lift Station Relief Well Project Contract Number 1066, and authorizing the mayor to execute that document. And finally, a resolution approving an application to Black Hawk County Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, for transportation alternatives set aside program funding, TASA, for the Cedar Prairie Trail Replacement Project, and directing the execution of said application by the mayor and city clerk.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Questions on these items?
David Dreyer, 3145 West 4th Street. Number four, um, what is New World Purchase Orders Module? We are in the United States of America. We don't need the New World. We are the New World.
This is, uh...
Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. New World just happens to be the name of the software for which we use for our financial system, and what the, um, work order system is actually going to do is, especially in public works, there's a lot of times that we order parts that can take anywhere from, you know, a few weeks to a couple of years out. Um, so what it ends up doing is it incorporates within our financial system, so we can see how far that's out, and to see whether or not we actually have paid for them or not. Because there are some times that unfortunately, um, we'll actually receive the product, and sometimes we don't get the invoices, and it takes a little while, and this way, we can, um, have a little bit of our accounting system for it, and they're...
So, this is another envelope we never had before. Never had before.
Currently, well, in public works, anyway, a lot of times, we were just doing it through, like, spreadsheets. This way, it already incorporates it right into our financial system that we're using. So, it's a better way to account for it, to track it.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, we use it interdependently with other city departments. This is a way to bring what Randy's department is doing, to bring that on, create greater efficiencies, and have a system that talks to each other, uh, a little bit better as well. Uh, anyone else, questions on these three items? Madam Clerk, 4, 5, and 6?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 7, 8, and 9, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the Iowa Certified Local Government 2024 Annual Report, and authorizing the mayor and community planning and development director to execute said document. A resolution approving an acquisition contract with Emily D. and Arturo S. Miranda to acquire approximately, uh, 2/10 of an acre of land in the amount of $22,095, and a financial processing fee of $250 for a total amount of $22,345. Excuse me, located north of 611 Jane Street in conjunction with the Delaney Creek Drainage Improvement Project, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And 9 is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with ESN Environmental Group, Inc., in the amount of not to exceed $3,800 to perform a Phase 1 environmental site assessment for 100 East 4th Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Questions?
David Dreyer, 3145 West 4th Street. Uh, number 8, I, I guess I don't understand why we're paying that kind of money per acre for 2/10 of an acre. That calculates out to $110,000 an acre. We haven't paid that for any other land anywhere else in this city. So, uh, why is this so special? And number 9, uh, I get, what is this, Phase 1 environmental site? So, is that a asbestos thing, or what?
All right, Noel, could you respond to those two questions? Purpose of number 8, and number 9, uh...
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Number 8, um, we did have the land appraised, um, since it is a platted lot, um, so if you think of it as a lot for 8,712 square foot lot, generally, lots are probably selling for $50,000 in newer subdivisions and all that. So, we had it appraised as part of this process, since it's a significant amount of their land, um, along Delane there, um, and this is what the appraisal came back at. Um, for, uh, number 9, uh, the Phase 1 environmental, uh, they will check for any suspected underground contaminants as well as asbestos.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Count, uh, yes, sir.
Nick Hedrick, 207 Highland Boulevard. I'm the Chair for Historic Preservation Commission of Waterloo, just here for number 7, if there's any questions for the historic preservation.
All right, thank you. Counsel questions? All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, 7, 8, and 9.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number 10?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to adopt a resolution approving the development agreement between Waterloo Development Corporation, WDC, and the City of Waterloo for the development of the Hard Courts Project on the Tech Works Site, including a grant of $4 million with payments over three years in the conveyance of WDC-owned properties to the City of Waterloo, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second.
Me again, David Dreyer, 3145 West 4th Street. I guess, does WDC, did we give WDC the land that they're going to give back to us for a dollar? And, uh, it just seems kind of funny that we keep giving land away, uh, plus bonus money to do developments that we already owned land, we gave to them, they developed it, they sold it, they made money off of that, and we keep giving everything away for a dollar. Something here doesn't, keeps not making sense to me. So, how much of this was already owned by WDC? We own, I assume, what we're going to give them, plus $4 million.
All right. Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Um, so, the WDC has never owned this land. Um, we have been partnering with them to, uh, prepare the site, um, with some, uh, removal of, uh, underground, uh, tunnels and things like that from a, it's an older industrial site, and kind of preparing the site. This would be the next, next step for the $35 million Hard Courts Project, um, would be the grant, and then, of course, the exchange of, of property and, and future acquisitions to help for, down, down to development with the WDC. But they've never owned this property, so, um, and we're not selling it to them, it'll be a long-term lease, um, 99 years for a dollar a year.
All right, yes, sir.
Forest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. The WDC gets a lot of their money from gaming. They donate. When gaming wanted to come to Waterloo, they told us citizens that there would be money coming that would help develop Waterloo. Well, this is not helping people like me. What this is doing is letting them use the gaming money as a down payment. They have now come to the city for more money. They went to the county for more money, and I pay county taxes, city taxes, and taxes on everything I own. This, to me, means that gaming did not help us here in Black Hawk County. I realize there's another fund that the city gets, but the WDC is using it as down payment to leverage more money out of the taxpayers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Mr. Miller, not to put you on the spot. Um, you want to talk about this project, sir? I'm not just going to sit in the back, we're going to get you out of here.
Thanks, Mayor. Jim Miller with WDC. Um, so, yeah, this is a $35 million project, as most of you are aware of. Um, right now, we've got $26,618,000 committed through previous fundraising efforts. So, this amount would put us just over, uh, 30.6 million. Um, we have had, um, support from the city previously, um, as well as Black Hawk County. Um, with this agreement, um, assuming approval, we'll be able to go to the state, um, and apply for a community attraction and tourism grant with the IEDA. Um, so, we'll be submitting a letter of intent very soon on that, um, request. And then, we're currently in the community, uh, working on raising the remaining 3.5 million of our $35 million goal. Um, we've had great partners, um, some are here tonight, the Schweitz Foundation, McRoe Foundation. Peter's Construction has been helping us, um, through the pre-construction process right now. Um, in terms of WDC, we're going to contribute 8 million, um, to this project. That's included in the current committed amount. That will come from our, um, agreement with Black Hawk County Gaming Association. Um, that'll go in over eight years, and then, in addition, we'll have the, um, properties that we agree upon with the city that we'll acquire at a later date to help, uh, continue light elimination in downtown and make way for new development sites, um, that will hopefully increase the tax base and, and bring more visitors and residents into downtown.
Jim, just really quickly, uh, maybe it's time, uh, I don't know when the last time we had Vanderwall and WDC give an update publicly, but we may want to kind of refresh that set again. Um, like, you've been involved in other projects in downtown, you know, a couple offhand you may comment on?
Yeah, so, other projects downtown, you know, the most notable one is the, the Sportsplex. Um, that was roughly 27 million. Um, I believe it was last year, we needed that over to the City of Waterloo. Um, we contributed just over a million dollars to the 4th Street pedestrian bridge lighting. Um, we've helped fund streetscape design to improve pedestrian access downtown. Um, and then, uh, our most recent expense, um, was we acquired 315 East 4th Street, which was the Romeo and Juliet Mini Cinema, um, so that business is no longer active in our downtown. Um, that would be one property that is going to be transferred over to the city as part of this agreement. Um, we did have an inquiry from a developer about buying that on Friday, so there is interest in these properties. We currently own 118 Sycamore, 128 Sycamore, and 100 West Commercial. Um, we have demolition contracts in place, so we'll get those buildings removed, um, and give, uh, basically, developable sites to the city as part of this agreement.
And just, um, one very, uh, comment that someone had made to me of influence. Um, the, the dollars or partnership, uh, with the City of Waterloo or those things you do, is there someone on WDC that's receiving a salary, like, are you or anybody else, like, getting rich from these projects? Because sometimes, that's the perception. Uh, can you speak to that for the record?
Yeah, so, uh, WDC, our board is all volunteers. Um, none of us pay or get paid, um, and in fact, several of us pay, um, to sit on the board. So, our board members contribute roughly $70,000 a year, um, to our organization, um, to just pay for our general operating expenses and consulting contracts. Um, none of us own, um, any property in the downtown area, so, um, none of us have properties that will see increasing, you know, rents due to increased activity downtown. So, we are all volunteers, we're all doing this for the good of the community and for the good of the city.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, just wait a second, there may be some questions from the council, but, um, is there anyone else in the public, uh, with questions? All right. Um, oh, all right, counsel, I'm sorry, I was thinking this is a public hearing, we got him standing up there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, where's the 4 million coming from?
No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So, the, uh, funding for the project would come from the downtown Tiff District.
How long can we keep taking from this well? And the reason I ask is that my email that you, you sent me this weekend said that you anticipate 1.6 million in the downtown Tiff from, from taxes, providing that no properties ever go down in value. But we're looking at, uh, close to $13 million for the, the whole city hall deal. When you look at 5.5 for construction, 1.35 for soft costs, 420,000 for design, 6, 6.2 million for, in the development agreement, so you're pushing close to 13 million. We've already committed 3.2 million to this project already, correct?
Correct.
So, that's going to take us to, coming out of the downtown Tiff, that's going to take us to 7.2 million, on, on top of, on top of everything else that we've got here. And I'm, I've just, and, and that doesn't count that we've got the, the potential of a, of a number of other projects that we may need to fund out of the downtown Tiff. If we get someone to come into the Blacks Building and put together a development agreement for Blacks, we're, we're going to have to come up with something. If we get someone that comes in for the US Bank Building that's sitting almost empty right now, or the Bergen KVD Building, or, or continued support for our parking ramps, this is, this isn't just, you know, in my opinion, this isn't just a, a never-ending pot of, of money, and, and I just don't know how... I, I feel like we're upside down in the downtown Tiff right now, because if, when you look I, I feel like we're upside down in the downtown TIF right now because if, when you look at other projects that are, that are coming up, the Courier Block Building, you know, that, that's, that's close to $500,000 for, for the $5,000 infill development per unit. Is that correct?
That sounds correct.
And then, and then about $200,000 to relocate their building. So that, that's almost three quarters of a million dollars on top of all this other stuff I've just brought up out of the downtown TIF.
So as, as a note, when, when you asked the question and, and kudos to Bridget, she's very good at, at updating the, the, the spreadsheets and the, and the budgeting for the TIF. So everything that the council has already approved, uh, by official action is accounted for. So there's 1.6 million in there after accounting for paying back the bonds, paying back the Courier Building, since we have a development agreement with them and all that. So that's an updated figure for where we're at today to move ahead with this. So those other numbers are already taken account to be paid by the TIF in their respective time periods.
So, and, and that, that's, that's good for clarification because the thing that I was concerned with is if we're bringing in 1.6 million dollars in TIF revenue in, in the downtown area. And, and we've, I mean, well, keep in mind that the majority of this, of this downtown, of the city hall move is we bonded for, correct?
Correct.
To be paid for back in what, 20 years? I'm not sure.
Was it 20 year, 15?
15 years. But that's, that's, that's a commitment that's going to come out every year for 15 years out of that downtown TIF. But you're assuring us that there's, that there's plenty of money in that TIF to, to fund $4 million on top of the 3.2 that we've already given them.
We believe so. I mean, again, we, we look at the budgeting for the TIF every year. Every single year, you know, there's projects that are coming out of, they're, they're no longer getting rebates. So we'll see an increase in value coming into the TIF there. There's values that, there's buildings that go up in value. There's buildings that go down in value potentially depending upon challenges to the assessor. So we look at them on an annual basis and see what we have for budgeting and move ahead with projects.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had, sir.
Well, and, but you know, I, I think, I think the, the broader conversation we've had, had conversations with, um, potential projects for the future. You confident, uh, we'll still be able to partner with those projects as well when we can?
It would be a great problem to have if we have large projects that we have to find funds to do because we'll see the return. And of course, you know, as you know, we'll, we'll put together spreadsheets and all that for projects to show to council what the rate of return is. And, and of course, that's just the property tax return. A lot of the time, there's other things that it's bringing to downtown such as visitors, such as more spending and all that. So there's a lot of, of things to be gained.
All right. And then, uh? Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for speaking. I think the big concern is can we afford it? And it sounds like from what you just said, the answer should be yes. One thing I think we need to consider, this is something that I'm in support of because of looking towards the future of Waterloo. And I had an, an opportunity to speak with, uh, Mr. Tavis Hall Experience Waterloo. And through their research, I think it included, it's going to be around $16 million of economic impact per year for the City of Waterloo. That economic impact translates directly to our general fund because when people come from out of town and they spend dollars here, they pay that tax. And that tax now represents 20% that goes towards the general fund. So looking at this as an opportunity for economic development, I think this is something that our downtown businesses have spoken about a lot with the parking. This will bring people to their businesses to eat breakfast at your restaurant, to be in the Cedar Valley, be in Waterloo. I'm in support of it for that reason. And I really want to look at this project as that type of foresight looking towards the future for bringing people into our city. One thing I would like to see with the, because it sounds, it always comes back to the utilization of these TIF districts. I would like to have a work session that just flat out tells us what's in these dang work, in these TIF districts. What's in each one? How much money is each one? And what is the actual plan for utilization for each one? Because I think this fits perfectly into a plan, but I want to see what that plan is. So I'm very supportive of economic impact in our downtown. But we just want to make sure that we, we know this stuff prior to the meeting, not coming and asking how much money is it going to be in that, uh, in that session. But thank you, WDC, for working for our downtown. And I look forward to seeing that economic, economic impact. People buying things in our downtown and paying that dollar for parking or whatever they do in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just had one more thing, sir. Whenever everyone else is done.
Mr. Bozen.
I, I was also, and, and, and Mr. Miller referred to it as blighted property. I was also concerned. And this is just my, my personal concern is that the, the 1.8 million dollars in undisclosed properties that this council had already, had, had discussions on that we weren't going to pursue. Oh, yeah.
We need to go back to the, go back to the record.
Well, you can, we can.
There's one in particular that's not on this list that there was conversation about.
Well, there was conversation on the 315 East Fourth Street. And we've also had conversations about the three properties over by the Sportsplex that we've had in, that I don't want to discuss the addresses or the names. But it just feels like we're, the, the council said that, that this, this wasn't, we didn't want to pursue this at this time. And, and now it's kind of an end around way to pursue it through the WDC and, and still get. I, I just feel like it was an end around on, on the council's wishes. That's just my own personal opinion.
You guys remember saying no to anything? So, anyway. But thank you, Mr. Bozen. Thank you, counsel, uh, for your comments. Thank you, WDC, for putting this together. I know all of us have traveled, uh, across the state of Iowa and other places and saw the economic impact that facilities like this can have. You're talking about this being so close to our downtown as well. Hotels, restaurants, uh, other retail opportunities. Um, so thank you guys so much for your efforts. So we need to vote now. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right.
Motion adjourned?
Thank you.
Motion being made with taking all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.